I'd like to call the March 16th, 2021 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you again for being with us. If you have a cell phone with you, I ask that you please turn it off or put it on mute. I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the Board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board members? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at this meeting tonight. We come to the consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we now come to public comment. Mr. Joyner, are there any members of the public signed up for public comment?
Please don't be here.
Don't be here.
Yes.
Well, okay, if you sit very quiet.
I'm trying to find how to get to that link.
Hey Tina, you're unmuted.
Okay, we're ready.
Tina, you are live.
Good evening. I'm Tina Madison White, a county resident and the executive director of Blue Ridge Pride. I didn't know what it was like to live in fear until I came out a few years ago. While my family and work colleagues stood by me, the rest of the world did not. Each day I would go to work uncertain that I would return home. Pedestrians harassed me in broad daylight, construction workers kept called after me, store clerks refused me service, one gas station attendant wanted to disembowel me, another to bed me. I lived in constant fear. It wasn't these individuals, it was the fear that for the first time in my life, if someone did attack me, no one would come to my aid. Would a nearby policeman step in to protect me? Or do you lend his boot to my face? Because there were no laws like this ordinance, nor leaders like you, I could never assume safety outside my home. My wife Mary lived in fear too. I often returned home to find Mary sobbing. She'd spent the day worrying that the next phone call would come from a morgue. And I'm one of the lucky ones. I have many friends who have lost their housing, their jobs, friends who've been beaten, harassed, and denied simple things like food, friends who flinch every time they enter a public space. You too would live in fear if you could not take it for granted that the people and institutions in power were committed to protecting your ability to live. Before I moved to Asheville, I spent 35 years consulting to and managing corporations all over the country. I helped some to lower costs, fight off imports, avoid bankruptcy. I helped others to improve customer service, enter new markets, create new ventures. I arrived here in March of 2016 with 35 years' worth of business-building skills. I arrived here the day after HB2 was passed. Since then, I've spent almost all of my time focused on human rights. I'm one of thousands of LGBTQ and minority residents in this county. Would you prefer that we devote our energy to flinching in fear or to working with you to build our community? A recent study followed LGBTQ entrepreneurs who relocated from less-inclusive cities to more-inclusive ones. Those entrepreneurs chose cities of inclusion in spite of their higher costs and taxes. In the 10 years after they moved, those entrepreneurs created 3 million jobs. But we are here, we are as eager as anyone else to build a future with this county. Please grant us safe passage, pass this ordinance. Thank you so much.
Allison, you are our next public speaker.
Thank you. My name is Allison Scott, and I use she or they pronouns. I'm a lifelong resident of Asheville and Buncombe, and I am a transgender woman. I'm here today to talk to you about the nondiscrimination ordinance, several parts of which are long overdue. And specifically, if you pass this NDO as written, it would have real and potentially life-saving impacts for the community by preventing discrimination with shelters covered under public accommodations. I have to tell you how incredibly difficult it is for me to talk to you about this today. You see, I'm sick and tired of talking about basic needs that shouldn't be up for debate. Why are we letting shelters turn people away for being transgender or non-binary? I've talked to and heard from trans and non-binary people over the years here in Buncombe who have been faced with a choice: stay in a gendered shelter that doesn't match who they are or leave. Even during Code Purples, they are faced with a decision that puts their lives in danger no matter the choice. We cannot protect non-binary and transgender people from discrimination in other parts of their lives if we don't start at this most basic need. Often, when I hear how people are turned away, they're looking for answers. Who can they report it to? What can they do to fix it? Then I have to tell them why it's legal to force a trans woman to stay in a men's shelter or face the freezing cold. Most people I talk to, it seems obvious, trans women should be treated the same as all women. Why is this legal? No one should be turned away in their most desperate time simply because of who they are or forced to be something they aren't. Well, it doesn't have to be legal any longer. You, the Buncombe County Commissioners, you can vote to say that discrimination in Buncombe County isn't just a concern in the rest of our lives such as restaurants or hotels. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Ken. Ken, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Ken Braim, live in Leicester, Hehilm, and I'm an activist with a local Sierra Club group. But I wanted to take a minute to, first of all, thank the Commissioners for putting this on the agenda and bringing this forward for a vote. It's long overdue. Many members of our community have experienced discrimination for far too long. In particular, our members of the LGBTQ community have experienced discrimination as long as I can remember, and it's time for that to stop. Also, we're seeing more and more discrimination against people based on national origin and their immigration status or perceived immigration status. So it's time for Buncombe County to step up and do the right thing and pass this ordinance. Fortunately, the prohibition against local governments passing these kinds of ordinance has now expired, no thanks to our General Assembly. And I think it's now time to step up and pass this ordinance and make sure every member of our community is safe and respected and have the basic rights that they all deserve. So please pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Judy, you are next.
Well, hi, and thank you for providing this wonderful opportunity. I'm Judy Maddox, I live in Leicester. I am Chair of our local Western North Carolina Sierra Club, and I have a very simple message following everyone before me. I strongly urge you to pass this nondiscrimination ordinance. I'm especially concerned about the LGBTQ community, which has had no protections for forever, for far too long. So I strongly, strongly urge you to simply pass this nondiscrimination ordinance. Thank you very much.
Kim, you are next. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Kim Roney, and I serve on Asheville City Council. But tonight, I'm speaking today as a resident of Asheville and Buncombe County and as a music teacher in support of the nondiscrimination ordinance on your agenda under New Business. In addition to the egregious bigotry in House Bill 2, the notorious bathroom bill, there were multiple issues that impacted all workers in North Carolina. House Bill 142 still did not address all the harmful legislation of House Bill 2 and has maintained harmful impacts on the people and our economy here in the state of North Carolina. So with the sun setting of parts of House Bill 142, communities across North Carolina have an opportunity to pass LGBTQ-plus-inclusive nondiscrimination ordinances that also include veteran status, pregnancy status, and natural hair, in addition to ensuring human and civil rights protections for our residents and visitors regardless of who they are or who they love. This ordinance is a step in taking better care of each other, and there are going to be more steps ahead. I'm thankful for this action and the Buncombe County taking this on because of what it means for a more hopeful future for our generations and the next, as we state publicly and back up with policy, our declaration that Buncombe County is ready to stand up against discrimination. Thank you to Commissioner Jasmin Beach-Ferrara for your leadership and for the Commissioners and staff making this nondiscrimination ordinance possible.
Grant, you are our next public speaker. Grant, can you unmute yourself?
Hi, Grant Millen, longtime Asheville resident and Buncombe resident. I'm an honorably discharged veteran, and I was just wondering how veterans were involved in the nondiscrimination as they're mentioned. And I get it, they include LGBTQ folks, and City of Asheville at least, their equity inclusion policy doesn't, actually does not mention LGBTQ folks or persons with disabilities. Persons with disabilities are even less engaged in Buncombe with politics and policy than a year, than a decade ago. This nondiscrimination policy mentions persons with disabilities among other groups. How did Buncombe engage with persons with disabilities? If you don't have an answer to how you engaged with persons with disabilities, this isn't a nondiscrimination policy that is really about persons with disabilities. And I want you to know that persons with disabilities are all genders, races, sexual orientations, and creeds. And I've sent the Commission and County Manager several action items about PWDs, persons with disabilities. Media and others are welcome to contact me at grantmillen@gmail.com. I don't have any paid role involving PWDs. I'm developing a nonprofit that may include a program for PWDs, and PWDs are just one area of my strategic innovation consultancy practice that can be served, one population that can be served by my practices. By the way, I may, with support, I may run for office in the future. A nondiscrimination policy with no enforcement isn't that great. And I've mentioned that all of the parties in this nondiscrimination policy can be persons with disabilities. And I just wanted to say that persons with disabilities are protected class just like African-Americans. LGBTQ folks, according to the US Department of Justice and US courts, they're not so much protected class, and so this is a great step. But I just want everyone to notice if Buncombe County is really going to do something about discrimination against employers regarding disability. I, you know, the enforcement part, I really want to hear you all have a real discussion about persons with disabilities because there are huge population of Buncombe. And so just all of a sudden mentioning persons with disabilities this way outside of Department of Health and Human Services issues, a little suspicious, but I'm looking forward to learning more. Thank you.
Pepe, you are next.
Hello, my name is Pepe Asabo. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking to you today to ask that the Buncombe County Commission require a signed memorandum of understanding with Asheville City Schools to maintain all existing classrooms that provide early childhood education as a condition of providing funding. I also ask that the County Commission do whatever it takes to maintain all programs at 441 Haywood Road so that our revolving door of superintendence does as little long-term damage to our district as possible. It's my belief that we cannot close our district's testing, achievement, and opportunity gaps without closing our preschool access gap. This means expanding, not contracting, our preschool access through the city, throughout the city and throughout the county. I cannot express how grateful I am to the Buncombe County Commission for prioritizing access to quality preschool education and establishing the Early Childhood Education and Development Fund. I recently learned that Asheville City Schools has asked you for $2.76 million. That's $920,000 per year for three years with an expectation of ongoing funding in order to establish four unidentified classrooms in Asheville Housing Authority properties while dismantling nine existing classrooms that currently serve preschoolers largely from Asheville Housing Authority families and families that really need the support. These families have not been informed of this reduction in services or the planned relocations. In the count of nine classrooms to be dismantled, I am including seven diverse year-round, full-day, bus-line-accessible preschool classrooms in the Asheville Primary School, Asheville City Preschool Building at 441 Haywood Road, plus two preschool classrooms at Hall Fletcher Elementary. That's a net loss of nine, well, four minus nine, that's a loss of five preschool classrooms or 90 preschool slots. Please do not use our valuable Early Childhood Education and Development Funds to subsidize a reduction in preschool access. Please require an MOU to preserve our amazing North Carolina five-star rated Asheville City preschool program. Additional notes and comments have already been emailed to the Commissioners. Thank you for your time.
Laura, you are next. Laura, can you unmute yourself?
Got it. Okay. Sorry. Thank you. All right. My name is Laura Lustig. I am from West Asheville, and I am a parent of two Asheville primary students and senior at Asheville High. I'm coming to you tonight because I have a lot of questions. I'm sitting outside the school board building right now waiting to make comments at a hearing to close Asheville Primary School. ACS has put out a study that has a lot of really questionable numbers in it, and I've sent a copy to all of you. Please take a look at my notes on that. The numbers don't add up. They're using COVID numbers to say that our enrollment is low enough that we need to combine schools. It doesn't make sense. They're using all different kinds of numbers to talk about what needs to be done to the school, but the number that I note is $200,000 in critical needs will get us through another year, and we need that year. We need our kids to come back to normal. We need them to be back in their classrooms. We need them to move past this COVID time, stressful crisis time, and we need to come together and we need to make some really good decisions. And so what I'm asking you, as the people who hold the money, is to do what you can to understand what's really happening in Asheville City Schools, because like I said, we got a lot of questions. I want to say for one thing that I really love Susannah Smith, the Director of the Preschool. I've known her for four years, as long as my kids have been there, and my kids did ACS pre-K for the summers. I'm real familiar with their program, and I love them, and they're doing amazing things there. We need more of that, not less. When I look at these DPI projections, what I see is that in 10 years, we are eliminating capacity for 10 preschool classrooms. It's 180 preschool kids who will not have the capacity to go to preschool at ACS in 10 years, and I don't understand how these numbers add up. One last thing. It seems to be a topic that no one wants to talk about, but it seems that there's a conflict of interest to me for the Board Chair to shift ACS resources to upfit AHA facilities. That's the organization that she's working for. I have nothing personal against anyone on this Board, but I think that it's important that we hold ourselves to highest standards of ethics, and I'd like to see the MOUs between ACS and Housing and understand how the money is flowing back and forth between those two organizations. I think partnerships are awesome. I think they need to be transparent. I think we need to understand what's happening in a really concrete way, and I think we all deserve to know, because the people who matter here are our kids, and we need to make sure that what we're doing and the money we're spending is serving them. So please hold ACS accountable and make sure that they are focused on our kids too. Thank you.
Jensen, you are our next speaker. Jensen?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I wanted to speak specifically on the Asheville City Schools $2.7 million request from the Buncombe County Early Childhood Education and Development Fund.
Can you introduce yourself first, please?
Yes, my name is Jensen Galafon, and I live in West Asheville, yes, and I am the husband of a Montessori teacher, Beth Mayberry, at the Asheville Primary School. And so I've been able to see this school really grow and change the lives of children ever since it opened nearly four years ago. This school is a special gem in Western North Carolina. You may or may not know that this school is the only public Montessori school in Western North Carolina. This is the only school in Western North Carolina that's providing an alternative Montessori education to people regardless of their ability to pay. If we talk about equity, and we talk about reparations, these kinds of projects like Asheville Primary School are what moves the bar forward and moves it ahead. It's very special, but unfortunately, it appears to be on the chopping block as part of this $2.7 million request. The plan is to close down the school and merge it with a traditional school, and it's murky about how well this Montessori program will be supported going forward. At a bare minimum, if the school is moved out of its current building, there will be trauma for the children and for everybody who has to move out and be relocated to a new school, and if that were happening, they would no longer be considered a full school. They would just be considered a program of Hall Fletcher and inevitably would not get the resources that they get now as a fully recognized and numbered school. So I think that prior to releasing this budgetary request, that we need to make sure that we're not cutting off our nose despite our face and that we're ensuring that the most vulnerable of our populations and the most vulnerable of our schools are protected before providing this kind of money, especially when we're looking at potentially lowering the total number of preschool slots in the district. So I would ask that you take a close look at this and make a decision that will benefit all of our kids and especially this fledgling Montessori program. Thank you so much for your time.
Pam, you will be our next and final speaker. If you can unmute yourself, Pam, on your phone. Pam, you are our final speaker.
Here I am.
There you are. Thank you, Pam. Go ahead and introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
All right, thank you. Hello, my name is Pam Renfro-Nese. I'm from Fairview. I received my COVID vaccine Monday, March 8th at the AB Tech Facility along with a 91-year-old friend who finally received hers. On the phone, we were told to bring our insurance card. Once there, we were given a form to fill out. We were asked if we had insurance and what kind. We were even asked for our social security number. When our number was called, we met with a worker who took our information and our insurance card, making a copy of the latter. We asked why she needed the card, and she said to cover administrative seat. She did not ask for proof of identity. Strange. My husband had his shot at UNCA on the 6th and only asked for ID, as were, and this was administered by Mahac or Mahac, whatever you call it. Friends in Henderson County, Tennessee, Virginia, Texas, et cetera, were not asked for insurance cards. This started to bother me as the week went out. So Friday, I decided to find out if our insurance companies were being charged. Could not get anyone at the Health Department or the County Office. Since signing up for this meeting, I got through to billing at County Health Department and was told that they are indeed charging Medicare, our private insurance company, for giving the vaccine. A message was left by Lamar Joyner, clerk of the County Commission Office, saying that he did not think that individuals are being charged, well, insurance is being charged. This seemed wrong to me, and that the taxpayers are getting double if not triple billed. Tax dollars pay for the vaccine. Our money either pay for private insurance or our social security, which pays for the Medicare we now receive. There is $100 trillion of COVID money sitting out there not being used. This is exactly what that money should be used for, not paying for roads and art museums. Nothing is free. We who worked paid for everything in this country. I just wanted you all to know what I found out, and if you thought this was okay, seems like double-dipping to me. Thank you very much.
All right, does that conclude all of our folks who signed up for public comment? All right. Thank you, want to say thank you to all the folks who took time to address the Board during public comment. All right, next up on the agenda is, under good news, is Certified Election Officials and Corinne Duncan. The Elections Director will explain this item.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks for your time. I'm here to just give the brief announcement that Election Services now has two more new certified elections administrators. That is Bria Bailey and Kevin Roberts. They couldn't be here tonight, but they are watching, so congratulations to them.
Right.
This certification requires going through all different types of election cycles, so that's the municipal elections, primaries, and the general. It takes about three to four years to do that. You have to attend various trainings and pass an exam, so it's a big accomplishment. This certification ensures that we have uniform knowledge across our staff, and it's a way to convey expertise to the public. a way to convey expertise to the public. Directors are required to get this certification, but staff aren't, so we're going above and beyond in that area. Adding Bria and Kevin to the mix gives our team six certified officials, and our goal is to have all of our staff have that certification. And we're working towards that. And Bria and Kevin, congrats again to you, and thanks for your hard work.
All right, Corinne, thank you so much for that update. That's great news, and we appreciate the great work that everyone on the staff and all the volunteers in the community do to help hold efficient and air elections in Buncombe County. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we've got a couple of different presentations, and the first one is going to be about Agriculture Awareness Day, and Jackie Gillespie from the Buncombe County Farm Bureau Women's Committee is going to talk to us about that. Thanks for being here.
So I have some booklets to hand out. Can I go ahead and hand those out to you? So I would just like to start off by thanking you guys for having us here today and giving us the opportunity to come before you and present our Ag Facts booklet ahead of Ag Day, which is next Tuesday, March 23rd. And I'd also like to thank Terry Wells for sponsoring us to be here. So just had a couple of comments. The booklet includes some quotes from some of our elected officials and some of our Farm Bureau leaders, and I had put just a few Ag facts in there. And some of those are US facts, some are North Carolina facts, and some are Buncombe County Ag facts. And one fact that I really find amazing, when I stop to consider the actual numbers, is the first one on the list, which says farm and ranch families comprise less than 2% of the US population. And I would say that number probably decreases every year, but yet we continue to feed the world. With that number decreasing and our population increasing every year, I think it's more important than ever to preserve our farmland. And that I would like to thank you guys for your past support of the farmland preservation efforts and ask that you continue to do that in the future. I'd also like to thank you for the support of the present use value taxation, which is very important to farmers, and ask also for your continued support in that area. Lots of times, this might make the difference in small farm being able to continue farming versus maybe having to sell their land, you know, to pay their taxes. So I think that's a very important program. I'd ask possibly that you consider going forward, being in support of buying more equipment for the county to run out to our local small farmers. And I wondered if you've ever considered maybe partnering with another organization such as Farm Bureau to maybe buy more equipment? And also maybe something to look at in the future would be some type of storage and maintenance program for that equipment to extend the life of it. In closing, I'd just like to say, you know, we as individuals, we depend on our elected officials to lead and guide, you know, our county or state and our country. We depend on our doctors and our nurses for our healthcare, emergency personnel to take care of us. We depend on our military and our law enforcement to protect and enforce the law. We depend on our firemen to protect our property. We depend on our teachers and our educators, you know, for learning. But at the end of the day, everything depends on agriculture to feed you. So in closing, just I'd like to ask you to take a moment next week on Tuesday, when you sit down to take a meal, just remember where your food comes from and thank a farmer.
Thank you so much, Jackie, for being here. Really appreciate it, and thank you Commissioner Wells for asking for this to be on the agenda so we can recognize this coming up. All right, next up, we're going to hear from the Western North Carolina Regional Air Quality Board, and Joel Storrow, the Chair, is here to talk to us about what the board's been working on. Thanks for being here.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to give you an update on the Western North Carolina Air Quality Agency, a 2020 year in review. I'm Joel Storrow. I'm Chair of the Agency, and I'm here with Ashley Featherstone, our Director. And I'd like to start with who we are. All right, if I can get the PowerPoint to move. Maybe not. There you go. Perfect. Our members, we have a five-member board, myself, Carl Kuhn is our Vice Chairman, Vonna Klanger, Evan Cuso, and Gary Wisnig. And we've had a pretty interesting year with COVID, as you might expect. Ashley's going to tell you a little bit more about how that all worked out, but we do have a new mission statement. The mission of the Western North Carolina Regional Air Quality Agency is to protect and monitor the area's air quality to safeguard the public health and the environment. I've lived in Buncombe County since the 80s, and like many of you, if not all of you, you probably remember how hazy it used to be in the mountains. It's pretty amazing that you couldn't see very much at all in the summertime. And since that time, we've made a lot of progress. I'm very proud of the agency and its accomplishments. Ashley and her staff do a fantastic job. You'll hear more about that here in a minute. The purpose of our agency is to govern the overall operations of the agency, including oversight of the agency budget, selecting the Director according to Buncombe County personnel policies, approval and industrial permits, and final judgment on appealed notices of violation. So we're an interlocal agreement between the City of Asheville and Buncombe County. We're governed by a five-member board. Three members are appointed by the Buncombe County Commission. That'd be Mr. Kuhn, Ms. Klanger, and Mr. Wisnig. Myself and Mr. Cuso are appointed by Asheville City Council. We also have an Advisory Committee. It helps us on various topics that the Board doesn't have time to monitor and address. Ashley's going to tell you a little bit more about that. But I'd also like to say that we're completely self-funded, so we don't get any subsidies from either the county or the city. We exist, and our accomplishments are based on the permit fees we get from the users, the industrial users and some of the other commercial entities. We get a little bit from the NC gas tax, and we also get some grants from the Environmental Protection Agency. So we're pretty proud of what we've been able to accomplish, and I'm going to turn it over to Ashley, and she's going to give you some of the details.
Thanks, Joel. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity to come talk to you about the agency. Going to get into a little bit more of the details about what we do and air pollution in Western North Carolina. We do have some unique challenges here because of our mountain valley topography. We sometimes do get temperature inversions, especially on cold nights when air can get trapped down low to the ground. And anything that, any pollution that we are generating stays with us. So we get odor complaints and notice these conditions a lot in the wintertime, and typically the inversions break about mid-morning. So I think it's been known that, you know, we have this issue here. And just a little bit about the history of the agency. We started out in 1947 as the City of Asheville Smoke Abatement Program. And back around that time, some of the larger cities all across the nation had smoke abatement programs because of the uncontrolled coal burning and the issues caused by pollution associated with that. Then in 1967, we became a multi-county agency. We actually had the US Public Health Service, this was before the EPA was formed, come and do a study here in the mountains. And they did studies all over the country where local leaders were concerned about air pollution. They did some monitoring and documented some of these issues. And there was a lot of collaborative effort between the health departments back then and Buncombe and Haywood particularly, and the industrial sources like the Carolina, the Progress Energy Plant, and also the paper mill over in Haywood County. So the four-county program reduced down to a two-county program, and that's what it was from 1970 to 2000. And then Haywood County withdrew from the program back in 2000, and it was reformed with the City of Asheville and Buncombe County with our current interlocal agreement. So our main duties here are, we're one of three certified local air pollution programs here in North Carolina. I like to explain it that the Clean Air Act allows local governments to have their own programs, regulatory programs, but only as long as they are at least as stringent as the state that they operate within. So we do operate the air pollution monitoring networks for ground level ozone and fine particles here in Buncombe County. Also participated with a sulfur dioxide monitor that was sited near the Duke Plant to monitor the air when they were still burning coal. We're responsible for implementing the federal, state, and local rules, so we have a permitting program. We have 70 permitted facilities, industrial sources here in Buncombe County that have air quality permits. We also permit area sources, things like gas stations have controls to reduce the hazardous air pollutants like benzene in the air. We also do the asbestos removal, demolition, and renovation permits, and open burning and dust, and I didn't mention here, but odor. We have a nuisance odor rule here in North Carolina also. So we respond to complaints for those issues. And we do education and outreach here, pollution prevention projects. We've successfully implemented some grant programs to retrofit diesel engines like school buses and fire engines. We have a Clean Air Excellence Awards Program, which we're currently taking nominations for from our permitted facilities and other organizations where we try to share some best practices and get some recognition for these pollution prevention projects that reduce air pollution, including greenhouse gases. And we're members of our local Clean Air Campaign and Clean Vehicles Coalition, which are hosted by Land of Sky Regional Council, actually working on putting together an air quality course that might be targeted to local governments, elected officials, planning staff. Something new that we're exploring. So I just have some really brief slides. I'll go through this quickly, but as you probably know, air quality has really improved a lot over the last few years. This is our ground level ozone design values. The flat bars at the top are the standards, the National Ambient Air Quality Standards, so you can see those change over time. So the air has been getting cleaner and the standards have been getting stricter because as more health data is collected, we find health effects at lower levels. So we've seen good improvement there. Also, our fine particle levels, our PM 2.5, we're seeing good improvement there. The air is really a lot cleaner, and here you can see the difference. This is a slide from the National Park Service, but you can see on the haziest days, visibility on the 20%, most impaired days has improved from nine miles to 39 miles. So it's really important because we know people like to come here to see clean air and mountain views. And this is directly related to the fine particles that we measure, that are very important for public health. So I've just got a couple more slides. What's new, what's going on at air pollution? As you know, the Duke Energy Progress Plant has switched over from coal to natural gas, so we're seeing great reductions in pollution there. The EPA at the end of last year designated the Limestone Township as attaining the SO2 standard. That was three years' worth of data that was collected when they were still burning coal as required to demonstrate compliance. And on a more internal level, we are modernizing our database, working with Buncombe County IT to update a lot of our data management programs, and this will enable us to take more electronic payments from our regulated community, something that they've been asking for. And financial update, as Joel said, we are 100% self-funded, and we have been. Our major sources of revenue are EPA grants and our permit fees from our industrial and commercial sources. To a lesser extent, we do get a fraction of the North Carolina gas tax, all the air pollution programs in the state get a portion of that. So our fees have been decreasing over time. It's great news for air quality. The emissions are down, but these fee programs, this one we call the Title V Permitting Program, that's for the largest sources of air pollution, those are based on emissions. And so right now, all across the nation, air pollution programs are redoing their fee schedules to charge more for things like complex sources, people that are, you know, companies that are subject to more regulations and things of that nature, because there's really no less work. We have more and more rules to implement, but, you know, we're trying to adjust to pay for the programs. And our EPA grant funding, it's one of our two largest sources of revenues. It's actually been leveled since 2004, which is about a 16% decrease when you account for inflation. So we have a dedicated group of staff that they do a fantastic job. We've, we're down, over the last few years, our staffing levels have decreased, but everybody pitches in and does a great job and gets the work done. And really proud of our team. We've, as everybody else with COVID, we've had to make a lot of adjustments when we go out to do our inspections at these industrial facilities. We're having to do a separate plan for each one to minimize everyone's exposure, but it's working well and appreciate the support from the county. Next steps, this year, our Board is having a retreat on April the 15th, and we're going to be updating some of our financial plans and looking at our permit fees to see about making some adjustments there. It's been about 10 years since we've adjusted our fees. We do go to rulemaking, public notice and comment whenever we do that, and we will be notifying the county and the city if we have a proposal there. Also, our Board is going to be meeting and talking about our Advisory Committee and their roles and responsibilities, other projects that we have going on, working with the county's environmental and energy stewardship team on projects, and learning more about the environmental justice arena with some work groups at EPA. Any questions?
I've got a question. I'm curious what involvement your group has with methane emissions in general, and specifically if you have any role or responsibility with landfills and methane gases that release from that.
So with the, there are federal landfill rules that do address methane. There's been some changes in those, and we have actually turned, the Buncombe County landfill is actually regulated by the North Carolina Division of Air Quality, since we're Buncombe County employees. But they do have a new source performance standard. And I have to tell you, I've had to look and get back with you on that because there's been some changes. The rule was originally issued, and then there were changes. I do know that the Buncombe County landfill does capture their methane voluntarily. So as far as the greenhouse gases go, the power plant does have a standard for the new units, and by burning natural gas, they need that. So not so involved with methane on our end right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? All right, Ashley, Joel, thank you both for being here and for your work with the Air Quality Agency in our region. Appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we're going to get a report on the Asheville City Schools DPI Facility Report, and Shane Casada, the Assistant Superintendent, is going to present this item.
Thank you very much for the chance to speak before the Commissioners tonight. We have with me Mr. Don Sims, who is the Director of Maintenance and Facilities for Asheville City Schools, and Tim Hawke, who is the Assistant Director of Capitol Construction with me as well. And we're certainly free to answer, or they're free to answer, any questions we may have later on in the presentation. I want to begin, first of all, by saying a huge a huge thank you to this Board of Commission and the School Capital Fund Commission that you help oversee. In going through, in preparation for tonight, we're looking back through fiscal year 16, which is when I think the Article 39 funds were put together to be a part of that school capital fund. I believe Asheville City Schools has benefited with over $140 million worth of construction and capital projects that have come through that commission. Those have been vital to the life of this school system over the last six years. And so I just want to say a huge thank you. And I know that's certainly what Mr. Sims, Mr. Hawke as well, because they are in those buildings every day. And that 140 million certainly makes their jobs much easier and much better, and our children to have a much safer place to be. And so thank you for that, first of all. As you know, DPI requires every five years that the school systems turn in a facility study to DPI, and that is what we are here tonight to present to you, as it requires both our Board of Commissioners and yours as well to approve that five-year plan to have that before it is sent off to DPI. Now, I will let you know that we also, in Nashville Schools, we do a capital needs assessment every four to five years as well, in addition to this facility needs survey. It really sort of puts a lot of the data into those surveys. That capital needs assessment is going to be conducted for our school system in 2022. We'll go ahead and start taking quotes on that in the very near future. But that's another round of projects that we'll be looking at to get a little more detail into what we are dealing with tonight. So if you, we'll look at the very first page, and I think the slide presentation, I think you have, I'm not sure if you just have a packet that has the first page that you're referencing with that facility needs survey. It's the capacity summary and plan for the first five years, the next five years. And obviously, there's a couple of things that I'd like to highlight as you're looking at that first page. The first would be that the overall number for our projection does go down. It does go down by 160 students. And part of that has to do with the pandemic. At the end of the 1920 school year, we began to see several students that began to move or to leave the area. That progressed and continued throughout this current school year. So I can tell you that the projection enrollments for next school year, those students and families do seem to be returning. I think we're projected to be at over 4,500 for next year. So I just want to alert you to that, that does not reflect that number. That was a number from the 1920 end of ADM year plus the projections that were being based on when we were doing this in December and January. Another highlight to note is, when I came into the system in 2017, at that time, there had been a, the most recent capital needs survey and DPI study had projected that there would be 5,000 students in Nashville City Schools by 2020. Now, the, obviously, that number was not hit. Obviously, the pandemic was something that couldn't be foreseen. So in the opening of Asheville Primary School and Montford North Star Academy, those were two buildings that were opened in the 17 year, fiscal year 17 year. Those were buildings that were opened at the time, thinking that that number of 5,000 students in 2020 would be hit. And obviously, that was not. So I just want to make sure that that is, it was a noted piece. And certainly, I think Don and Tim could speak to those projections because I do think that was a grave worry and concern back in 2017, when the last time you signed off on one of these studies. The other would be obviously the closing of Asheville Primary School, and you've heard tonight about, from some of those families. And I'm sure you have some questions about that. And I did produce, this is a document that we gave to families back in the summer, that those around might be able to answer some of the questions that you have that would be related to that closing, because I do think that's obviously probably the most stark notice that you would see on that capital facility needs survey that we've just turned in. Another part of the first page there that I would like for you to note as well, is that in the next five years, we do see a large group of students that will be coming to the Asheville High Silsa Campus. And in the capacity of that campus, which is at around 1,500 when you put the, but the two schools together on that campus, you will see that we will be maxed out on that facility. In fact, if you went into those facility, that facility now, you would find that they are already at, there are no rooms available on that campus in terms of trying to find available space. They have spaced themselves out. As we see that enrollment roll up through those grade spans, we will then begin to worry about the capacity in those rooms. So Asheville High is obviously a great concern for us over the next few years. And you'll see in the money that we're asking that would, to renovate and to project that enrollment increase at the high school, we'll need to be able to facilitate that growth. Those are the three that I would just want to note to you. And certainly, at this time, I can answer any questions. And I can also refer to the packet that I just gave you in regards to Asheville Primary School if you have specific questions.
I have one initial question. So the, on the first slide, the ADM for 2019 and 2020, so this year, for K-12, it's 4284, 4,284 students.
Correct.
But obviously, this has been a very unusual year. So could you just say a little bit more about, where was it the year before, to get a sense for like the clearest normal quote?
The most normal year, yeah. We were pretty routinely between 4,400 and 4,350 for about four years, three to four years. And so I pretty safely could say that we believe 4,400 is probably a number that we feel is very consistent. Now, we do have a little bit of leeway in that number, in the number of out-of-district requests that we get. That's a number that we can control. We've been very blessed that many students request to be a part of Asheville City Schools. And so when capacity allows, we are able to bring more of those students in. And so that is, that's been a luxury that we've had. Now, at the same time, in doing so, those are added costs that we bring in as well, too. So it's a balancing act. But typically, 4,400 is a good number to shoot.
And the 4,400 number is reflective of both the kids who are from families within the district, as well as those who are
That is correct. 4,400 include those out of districts.
From outside the district, okay.
Yeah.
Commissioners, other questions?
How many kids do you have this year who live out of the district?
Well, this year may not be the best number to look at because of COVID. I'd have to, I'm not, I'm not in the enrollment world anymore. It used to be over the enrollment department. So typically, I would say that number is probably in the, you know, 400 range, four to five, 400 to 500, I would say would be pretty close. And the number of requests that we have, acceptances would probably be at probably 75% of that, I would
You know, a question I have is, when we talk about primary school and preschool, they're both in the same building.
Correct.
And you said the primary school started in 17. Now that, we're talking about the Montessori school.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's, but the preschool has been there for how many years?
Preschool was there at least, I don't know, gentlemen, that predates my time. But I'm guessing at least 20 years before that, 15 years.
Well, I know when I was on the school board for eight years, and that's been a number of years ago, it was there long before that.
I think, I think it's at least 15 years that is there before in that building, and perhaps more.
Okay. Now, the concern I have is, you know, we gave you, what was it, $300,000 last year for the mold, if I remember. I don't hold me to be right.
I think it was 240, but I'm not sure about that. I guess right, yeah.
Yeah. Now, you know, at that time, we had no indication that the building you were going to move out of. What changed so drastically to close it down?
So in this, this is the document, you can see that it's dated May 29th, 2020. I know, in, I would say probably January of 2020, before the pandemic even hit, we had a couple of mold issues on that top floor. And as we began to address those, we suddenly realized this was a much larger problem than we had budgeted for. And so as the pandemic hit, that greatly increased our worry about the HVAC system and the airflow and ventilation quality in that building. And so we felt like it was an emergency at that point, before we could put students back in there, that we had to do something. So we appreciate the release of those lottery funds to help us address that in a very quick manner. And you can see here in those, that first page of the handout that I gave you, how that money was going to be spent on the, on the front end of that. We knew those had to be abated immediately. The trouble with the mold in a building that's a 19, I think it's 1954 or 55 building that we were dealing with, is that you don't know what you may still yet uncover. Obviously, there's some asbestos and lead issues that we, you know, obviously inform everybody about, and how we, how we manage those. But obviously, we had to be very careful in what we were assuming. So we weren't sure how big the project may be. And so we appreciate the release of the 240. I will say that I know from my maintenance department and their, and they can certainly speak for themselves, they've had concerns for quite some time. If you'll look on the next page.
Before we leave the, just the mold remediation project, let's, can we just stay on that for just a second, because I had a question, too. So where does the project, where does that project stand currently? So there was $240,000 of the lottery funds
Correct.
approved for that. So how much of those have been expended? And just where's the process? You've got these different phases. So where exactly does that?
Sure. So all of those phases, that first $110,000 has been, has been completed. When I checked with our CFO, I believe there's still somewhere around $100,000, $160,000 still left of that 240 that we were able to get through. So that's still there. Now, some of those were including some office moves that we had to do because office spaces had to be vacated while we were doing that. And so there was some moves there. There's still, there's still a good part, portion of that money. And I think it was 240, maybe in 270. I can't remember exactly.
But at this point, the mold remediation project is considered complete?
That part has been completed, yes.
Okay. So then there's, and it's considered to have been successfully addressed.
That is correct.
The good news is it came in
Which basically is
It came in quite a bit under budget.
It did, which is the left side of the building. Basically, if you're looking at the building, the entire left side was really what we were having to worry about in that abatement. The preschool side was not one that, at that moment, we were having mold issues with. Now, there are several issues in that side of the building, and I can go into those here in a minute. But that, that portion of the project has been completed.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to close that thought.
Yeah.
Shane, do we have, do you have a report from architects or engineers on the condition of the building?
Yeah. As far as the air quality, we've had that building tested, I would say, three times over the last year. Does that sound right? Four, four times over the last year. Most recently, I believe in October, before we were planning on coming back the original time for the Plan B in November. And it passed all air quality standards at that time.
What about structural report? I mean, have we seen?
Yeah. Structurally, I may have to defer to Tim and Don on that, and you're welcome to speak. I don't know, we've had a structural engineer to go through that building.
We don't have any such a much more dangerous thing.
Let me get him to come.
Hey, Don, could you come up to the mic?
Come up here.
Because we can hear you, but the folks who are listening in.
We can hear you.
What I was saying is, on the structural side, we haven't seen any indication that would cause us to have to get a structural engineer to evaluate any problems. We don't have any masonry cracks. We don't have anything on the fascia. We don't have any walls, any floors inside that's unlevel. The typical things you see structurally, we haven't seen any of those.
Well, that's surprising, because the superintendent told me that the building was not safe. And you tell me structurally it's sound?
I'm just saying we haven't never had a structural engineer or anything to look at it, that we've never seen a problem. The only place that I can think of is we had a problem in the gym, but I think that was due to water.
Well, how can we publish and put out that the building is not safe? And I'm not, don't misunderstand me, Don. I'm not, I wish the superintendent was here, really. But how can we put that out when we have not had a structural report from an architect or engineer?
Well, I think part, excuse me, we have had evaluations from architects as far as the interior of the building, as far as the heating and cooling side of the building, asbestos tile that's in the building. The mold, let's back to the mold. We had canvas, old canvas coated heating and air lines. So what had happened through the years, it sweated, and it was definitely black mold on that whole side. When taking the piping out, taking the insulation off, we found out the piping is absolutely shot. So we did re-insulate. This time, we used a PVC cover to keep the moisture down. And that way, it bought us some time. But the mechanical side, all the domestic side on the hot, on the water, all those kind of issues are still there. So there is some issues with asbestos. There is some issues with the lead paint. Those kind of things that we have to keep abated and/or contained. So those are, and that building does have a tremendous amount in there, because it is a 50s building.
Right, sure.
Let me just add one thing, too. In, in the piece that I gave you there with the Nashville Primary School, there's two items there in particular that'll sort of talk to some of the issues that we were most worried about within our department. These were from our outside firm, that PFA that had come in to do an outside assessment for us. And these are 2018 prices, so you would have to do a 10% to 12% increase per year potentially. But they had said that there were at least two items there, $900,000 abatement, envelope repair, hot water system repair, sewer water and electric lines, and then another 2.7 in the HVAC system, including that hydroponic piping that Don was speaking to a second ago. So those were, those were big projects that needed to be addressed in the very near future for that building to have any kind of viability going forward.
And I'm sorry, what's the name of the company that did that?
It's PFA.
Right. And what type of firm do they operate? Is it, is it engineering or architectural?
It's, it's padgett framing architects. It's PFA. That first initial evaluation that we had of this building is when the School Capital Commission was formed. And we had Buncombe County Representative who was with us through that whole process to help with that. So he's retired now, but
Greg Israel?
Yeah, Greg Israel. So he, he went through the initial evaluation of all of our facilities.
Okay.
If I could jump in with a few questions. Jasmine Beach Farrar, thank you all. I also chair the Early Childhood Education Development Committee, so all of these questions are very germane to questions before us. It feels to me like there's really two primary questions. One is the current safety and health of the building, and how long it can be safely utilized. And then the second is decision-making around the future of the building, and whether we make these larger-scale investments to rehab the building, or whether we contemplate alternative uses for the property and the building. So to start with the first, could you tell me, are there students currently in the building?
There are students currently.
Is it safe for them to be there?
It is safe for them to be there. One of the reasons that we conducted the air quality test before we re-inhabited the building back in October was to make sure that it would be air quality-wise.
I figured as much. I know you all wouldn't put kids in a building that wasn't safe. How long can they safely stay in that building before we have to start making real decisions as a community, certainly starting with you all, about whether to start investing in some of these larger-scale renovations? Would they stay there through the duration of the school year before the concern level gets higher? Would it be a whole nother school year?
And you will, and you could certainly see in what we were proposing, over the last three years, we had, you know, spent around a half a million dollars in that building of our capital-ish funds that we had not, you know, gone to the Capital Commission to ask for. One of the reasons One of the reasons that we did not necessarily put that project higher on the list was because it did not have, we don't have a large number of students in that building. We would try to cover those costs under our own capital funds and take larger projects to the Capital Fund Commission. So as we budgeted for this year, you could see that we were already going to be, you know, we had a $200,000 critical item that we were going to attempt to go in there and put into that building this year. That was before the abatement issue even came up.
Mm-hmm. I guess, I understand the difficult position you all are in and all the heroic work you've been doing this year. And I think what we're just trying to get to is, and I'll just speak very plainly from the early childhood perspective for a moment, is how we can best support Asheville City Schools in maintaining but also continuing to grow the preschool program and the pre-K program, and how we can best be a partner in that in a way that also helps the whole system around early childhood education and pre-K and Buncombe County grow. And that's really why we're trying to drill down to understand if there's an opportunity to safely have the preschool operating in Asheville Primary School for a longer period of time so that we can, at the community level, do the kind of planning we need to do around what is the best home for the preschool. I know there's a lot of interest in potentially relocating it to Asheville Housing Authority sites, which might be exactly the best idea possible. But doing that in a way that, if we pull the fire bell and say kids need to be evacuated from this building immediately, it sets off a chain reaction across the early childhood system and could potentially actually displace other providers and actually recut the overall slots in the community, which, as you can imagine, is a huge concern as we actually work to grow the system. So for those of us on the Early Childhood Committee, we come to this conversation with the, obviously, the general interest in wanting to think about all of the capital assets of the school district, but also a really specific and really time sensitive concern that if, in fact, the primary school building is safe today, and wanting to really understand how long can children safely be in that building before there's a need to move because we're at this decision juncture? We have to either invest and really refurbish this building and make it a safe, healthy place, or we need to move forward with an alternate plan. And that's the piece that it's just been a little challenging to get a clear answer on. Can you all help us understand?
I can't speak to any of the programming, obviously, but I can talk about the infrastructure and those kind of things. The, when we did the evaluation of the building, it's a 5.8, $6 million rehab if we completely go in to do the infrastructure, to do the piping, to do the hot water, to take care of the roof on the gym, to do all the things that really needs to be done to make that building. Our HVAC systems and several of our schools are very antiquated, but in this one, obviously, it's extremely antiquated. Like I was telling you, the HVAC pipes that we re-insulated, they could actually bust right now. I mean, and then we would have an issue, obviously, of trying to get that fixed. We get into a situation of where, when this pipe is so thin, we can't get a fix on it. So that's pretty much where we are on the mechanical side of the house. On the domestic water, it's fed from two or three different sources. We have redone one of the gang bathrooms, but other than that, every restroom needs to be completely redone. Domestic plumbing would have to be redone. Sanitary sewer would have to be redone. The window glazing in that building, one of the things with that, some of those, that glazing even has asbestos in it. So there's times when we get a broken wind, I have to have it tested prior to my glazier going over and fixing the window. So if, what you would have, if you put the building where it needs to be, and I'm using that $6 million figure because that's what the architectural firm used, you would have the walls pretty much left standing, and then you'd have to build everything else back. So, and that does nothing to any type of site development. And as we all know, I-26 is coming through. Well, that's been another issue with this building when we've been talking about funding for some of our other schools and taking that to the Capital School Commission. Then, at one point, DOT was talking about maybe helping us with the windows. Commissioner Whiteside, you may remember those first initial, I can't remember when you left our board, but first initial talks with the DOT, they were going to do some sound walls, they were willing to do some things to the building to help it structurally because of extra traffic, all those kind of things. So met several times with DOT and the chairman of the board at that time. I've been here eight and a half, going on nine years. So I can't speak to anything prior to that. But as far as the building itself, you're talking about a $6 million renovation. Then, what happens when I-26 comes in, the two-way ramp where we take our traffic in and out becomes a one-way. So now, we will have to build a road around existing gym building, around the back, exit onto Argyle, and try to get back to Haywood Road. So when you start throwing all of those kind of dollars in, then that gets to be an extremely expensive renovation. And so at what point do you say, okay, that's too much money to put into that building? And so that's.
Thank you. I appreciate and appreciate your expertise, and I totally hear you and agree that that's the decision point that's on the horizon. And the question I would just appreciate hearing more about is, how long can programs safely stay in the building?
I mean, that, you know, it's a little bit of a catch-22 in that, you know, every year, I tell my maintenance staff, prepare this building for occupancy for this next year. At the same time, we're going to plan and do our budget for at least five years down the road in how we're planning. Now, we produce a budget that has five years of projections of how to keep this building going. So could I keep the building going for five years? Yes. For that dollar figure there is what I'm going to tell you that it's going to cost us to do that. My worst is, is that the unforeseen comes through, and something comes about that I don't know is going on in the road.
We have a mechanical failure on an eight-degree nut.
So, you know, those are things we also sort of have to plan for, and we do. We have another budget line item, but just the building itself and what I know it's going to require.
So the building's sort of on life support, but it's still alive?
That's what I would tell you.
And we just start wondering how long it can be alive before this other set of decisions is made?
And the other thing is, I am a absolute huge proponent of the pre-K program. Susannah Smith is an absolute gym. She's wonderful. Dawn Meskell before her. We have been very blessed to have those two people, and I know that you know their work. So I know how valuable their work is to the system. But I also know, I want to provide a clean, healthy building so that when they're going to spend their dollars, they're spending instructionally on personnel that improve the program, not that I'm having to divert it to make sure that it's just an average building that it's okay to be in. That's not good enough. And so I think they deserve better than that.
Thank you. Thanks for answering all those questions.
Well, have we looked at what it would cost to extend the life of the building, say 10, 15 years? And the reason I ask that, you know, it might be cheaper than building a new primary school for 24 million because, and what I'm getting at, the land, it's an ideal location. When you look, if you take a compass and draw a three-mile map, a three-mile circle, you would get probably 90% of your disadvantaged kids in that circle.
Sure.
And that's what I'm looking at. You know, when we think about the future, and when you talk about the road from the state, I would think, if they're going to damage us when they come through, hey, if we got any kind of legal staff at the city, they should pay for that. I mean.
Well, and that was another consideration, Ms. Whitesides, is that, you know, not knowing what was going to happen with DOT, we didn't know how much money to invest in that building. At one point, they were coming much closer to the building.
Yeah, but they moved to the other side now.
They moved sort of back and forth.
Yeah.
So, you know, we've just, there's been a little hesitancy in how much we could put in, not knowing exactly.
Right. Yeah. I agree.
And one thing, Commissioner Whiteside, I want to go back to the structural side of it. When we put heavier trucks, we put more traffic on Haywood Road, those kind of things.
Right.
That will structurally affect the building. So we have some glass blocks over there currently, as you know, that are the clear glass opaque block. That's not the best structural thing to have in the building. So when I-26 becomes a reality, then that will definitely cause more of a dynamic vibration in that building, no question.
And I think currently, speaking of just traffic, the Argyle Road, if you know anything about that area, that's a very small, narrow road.
Oh, it is. Yeah.
Several times, our buses have great difficulty making that turn in if there's any kind of parking issue on that side over there, which makes it difficult, for instance, in evacuating that building quickly, you know, that's an issue. So we don't have an obvious solution to the Argyle issue at the moment. And we've worked with the city to try to work on that, but there's not a lot of, just not a lot of solutions we can come up with at that moment, for the moment right now.
Right. We've met with, of course, we've had several different folks we've worked with, with city engineering. So Haywood Road is a DOT road. Argyle is a city street. So that creates a little bit of a problem. But with Argyle, we have to keep bus traffic and school traffic apart. So I'll answer your question about how much money to put back in the building, and that's that $6 million that I'm talking about. That is what, with our architectural firms, with their professional appraisers, that kind of stuff, that is renovation of inside of the building. But like I say, that's no site development of any kind. No roads, no parking lots, no Argyles, none of the above. So I just wanted to answer your question.
Thanks. Yeah. I appreciate that.
And I certainly, we welcome those questions. We should be accountable for that. We appreciate the money you've given. We certainly appreciate the money that you have provided for our pre-K program. I know Susannah Smith, again, has reiterated that, and when she puts that grant request into the Early Childhood Committee, that is, it would not be done lightly. And so certainly, we know that. At the same time, I want to make sure that we're good stewards of what we're doing with this money, capital-wise, and so.
And I think that's where we make that decision, is where that breakoff is, you know. And I just want to reiterate what Dr. Kastas said. Since I've been here for the last eight and a half, nine years, this commission and past commissioners have built two new schools through the Capital School Committee. We've been able to renovate some antiquated HVAC systems in three schools. So in the last nine years, I just, I wanted to tell you all that we appreciate the funding that you have give this school system.
Are there other questions, commissioners?
Yes. So it's my understanding that a public hearing is being held concurrently through our meeting with your school board to hear the public comments on the closure of APS.
That's correct.
Dr. Cassidy, can you give us any idea of a timeline on when a decision will be made after the public comment is taken? The timing of that was really unfortunate. I'm sorry you've had to take the brunt of our questions.
No, that's quite, I mean, that's quite all right. And yes, the timing was very unfortunate. Working with our legal counsel, Chris Campbell, basically, in closing a building, there has to be a facility study. That study was presented tonight. It was made, put forth on the public for them to be able to see, which is a lot of the information that you may see here and some other pieces that have been added for previous years. Public comment tonight will be taking that into account with that study. And then, it's my understanding, the board will have to make a decision in April as to what they will do in formally going forward with DPI to steps to close that school, in that school number.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Were there any other, was there any other, we've been spending some time on this item, sir, anything else you wanted to share with us just overall about the DPI?
None that I can think of, other than just, you know, again, we reiterate how much we appreciate, and we know we need your support, and you've always provided that. And so we don't take that for granted. We appreciate the chance to come tonight and talk to you about it.
So as, so on the agenda, we had the, you know, this report that we're looking at. That's the only item that's on the agenda?
That's correct.
Is there something that we're being asked to do as a board?
Yeah. Basically, I think Buncombe County did a similar piece where they brought forth their facility needs survey. This requires a signature to note that these are the funds that we think it will be required to go on for the next five years to 10 years.
Okay. Do we have a copy of, I know I actually just looked at the, that was the county document. Is that correct?
It was the document.
Okay. Can I get a, can you bring that back up, Laura? I just have to look at it, because I don't think, the board hasn't looked at it, so I just want to.
This is the agenda item. This?
No, there's a document that, there's no document to sign that's on the agenda.
No. It wasn't on.
So I guess, I guess the question is, so there's, the board hasn't had a chance to see this. I could read it. You know, I mean, I'd appreciate, I think this has been a good conversation. We need more information like this, I think. But the document that I think the schools want us to sign, basically, let me just read it so that everyone can kind of see what the document is. The Asheville City School Board of Education hereby submits its Facility Needs Survey dated this date, listing all improvements and additional facilities needed to accommodate projected enrollments through the 2021 through 2021, 2020 to 21 school year and improvements to existing facilities to provide safe, comfortable environments to support the educational programs. We do hereby certify that the needs identified herein are a true representation of our situation. Alternatives were considered in this plan provides the best balance between the cost and benefit to our students. We understand that the costs have been standardized to statewide averages to provide uniform comparisons. And then, that's the segment that the, I believe, that the chair of the school board signs, and then the part that the commission would review. It says certification of board of commissioners. The Buncombe County Board of Commissioners has received and reviewed a copy of this survey prior to submission to the State Board of Education. This does not necessarily constitute endorsement of or commitment to fund the facility needs survey. So the part that's relevant to us is a little bit different than what the school board signs. Let me just reread it again. Certification of Board of County Commissioners. The Buncombe County Board of Commissioners has received and reviewed a copy of this survey prior to submission to the State Board of Education. This does not necessarily constitute endorsement of or commitment to fund the facility needs survey, and there's a position for the county chair to sign it. Is this language the standard language that every school district in the state, and this is basically, every district has to get this document?
When that report is put together, that is the signature page that's generated for every district to sign.
Okay. So, because I guess, you know, you know, I mean, I personally, in terms of like endorsing the closure of the primary school, like I would not be prepared to do that. I'm not sure that's the right decision if, like, our board is being asked to do that. I wouldn't vote for that right now. And I'm not saying it's not ultimately maybe the right decision in the long run. I just feel like I don't have enough information to reach that conclusion at this time, particularly for some of the reasons related to how it might impact other preschool operations in the community when those classes have to move somewhere else. However, I think this language is not asking us for an endorsement. It's basically saying that we're receiving this report from the school district. So.
It's more of an acknowledgement.
Whoever else hasn't had a chance to look at this yet, so I don't know if the commissioners feel like they won't have a chance to look at this or review this before taking action on this tonight, because it wasn't attached as a document on the agenda. Okay. Is there a particular date this has to be submitted to the state?
No, we met our deadline with the state. No, we met our deadline with the state as far as turning in, the state has this, they're just waiting on our signature pages. And we, I told the person that's over that division that there could be some time in waiting to get those signatures, and there's fine.
Okay.
Particular time.
Ronnie, I think as a commission, we need to let them know, unless somebody disagrees with you, I don't, that we are not for closing the preschool or the primary school at this time. Until we would like to, you know, we need to deliberate more on it, we need to get more input from the community, from the parents. That's my, this has not been transparent at all, and that's the problem I have with it. You know, you spring something this critical on the whole community at the last minute. That's the, you know, my problem is not shame with you, but I have a serious problem with the way the superintendent and the school board has handled this. Because it's not transparent at all. And it's no way I could, I would endorse this, you know, for them closing the primary school at this time. You know, as a taxpayer who lives in the district, you know, I pay that supplemental tax, and I have a grandson that's in Syls, at Asheville High. So, it's not like that I don't have a lot to do with, and he's the sixth generation of my family to go through the school system. But, I'm really concerned about how we have made this decision.
I certainly understand your concerns, and I hear them, and I'll be glad to convey those back. I just want to reiterate that, you know, there is a current plan for those rooms to be moved into facilities either temporarily or permanently, depending upon the decision that the board, you know, makes. And I certainly understand that that could affect other providers, and certainly, that's something that I want to make sure that we, you know, we're, you know, welcome to talk about that, and we certainly could and can. And I know, again, Susanna Smith and Dr. Freeman, you know, at some point, we need to have those people at the table, we can certainly do that.
So, it sounds like we need to, so let's put this, I would, I don't know, do we need a motion to just basically extend this item to the following agenda for the next commission meeting where we can have the facility report as well as this document placed on the agenda so everyone has a chance to review it, you know, like any other.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is a presentation item, so typically, no vote is expected. And I think it'd just be for the board to direct staff to put it on the next agenda.
On the agenda for the next, because I do think even though there's a position here for the Chair to sign it, I would not do that without approval of the board. So, let's do that for our next meeting. And are there any other questions for now?
If I could just, just in closing, I think these are, it's obviously very important for us to be far down the rabbit hole in this conversation, but it would be remiss not to close, I think, by lifting up something that I've heard in every single conversation, including with the superintendent and the school board, and from you tonight, Mr. Cassidy, and certainly from us as a body, which is a very strong, clear commitment around expanding access to high-quality pre-K and the partnership with Asheville City Schools being a linchpin in how we do that, as well as with providers like Head Start and Werner and Buncombe County Schools and the YW. The largest providers in our county will need to be at the forefront of that, and we will all need to be, have our arms linked and be shoulder to shoulder as we do that. So, my great hope, as we head into a period where the school board will be deliberating, is that there can be the time and the space for the conversations that need to happen to ensure that all current classrooms have a safe, healthy place to be, but also that we're expanding the number of classrooms as quickly as possible. And there's a way to do that, so that by August, there could be more pre-K classrooms online in Buncombe County. The path we're on right now is a collision into, that puts us backwards, and actually takes classrooms offline. And I think we, as a community, need to make sure all the key collaborators are at the table so that we can land the plane by August with more pre-K classrooms online, and that's very possible. So, I appreciate you getting in there with us, I learned a lot. Thank you for sharing expertise around the structural and mechanical issues, and appreciate the opportunity for this conversation tonight.
Thank you very much.
And I'll just, just my last thoughts are, I think these, some of these decisions around older facilities are hard, right? Because there can be points where investing additional funds into older buildings could be better invested in newer facilities. So, I don't, I don't think, I don't think these are simple questions, I think they, you know, but I think they're important ones, and we appreciate, you know, all the thinking that's gone into this. But, the county does have a particular role in terms of making sure the capital projects are taken care of. So, that's, I think that's part of the reason we really want to learn more about kind of the ideas around this, the different possibilities around this, you know, kind of fundamental question of, you know, do we, are we ultimately moving towards taking one of our public schools offline, you know, indefinitely versus, you know, the significant investments that would be needed if we are going to maintain it for the future. So, thank you for helping us with that discussion tonight, we look forward to talking further. All right, commissioners, thank you, thank you gentlemen, and we're going to move on to the next item, which is a public hearing regarding the Biltmore Farms rezoning request.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, members of the public. My name is Nathan Pennington, the Planning Director for the county. We're going to queue up our presentation here. Just to discuss the process here, we'll give the staff report, and then we'll move into a two-vote series. One will be the consistency statement, and the second one will actually be the vote on the rezoning request itself. This is a staff-initiated rezoning request at ZPH 2021-00005. The parcel number is 9635.38.4624. Just to note, this rezoning is not a development approval or an entitlement to do so. It is a change in the zoning classification of the property. The property was noticed in accordance with local and state law, it was properly posted onsite as well as our website. This is the applicant information, as noted, it is staff-initiated. It is an unaddressed portion of a 100-acre parcel east of Brevard Road. If you'll notice the screen above you, if you'll pay attention to the light blue area, this is the portion of property that's to be rezoned, it's 11.57 acres of an overall 100-acre parcel. The color coding here, R3 is the green area, the blue is employment. So, the request is to move from R3 to employment, and it's only contained within that black outline, so that 100-acre parcel. The 100-acre site is fairly isolated from other outlying uses and is surrounded by a much larger 345-acre parent parcel, which is also owned by Biltmore Farms. Biltmore Farms is the current owner of this parcel as well. It will change hands to the Pratt and Whitney folks at some point, but it is still owned by Biltmore Farms. The site is currently vacant, with only minor infrastructure improvements, including a series of large MSD transmission lines. If you'll look at the picture there, you will see the cleared area, it crosses the river, and that's the transmission line area. They run approximately parallel to Brevard Road. The subject parcel is south and east of the French Broad River, west of I-26, and north of the Blue Ridge Parkway. The proposed rezoning would allow additional uses in the employment district that are not currently allowed in the R3 district. However, additional development is not planned in the area at this time. A training center in collaboration with Pratt and Whitney Buncombe County and AB Tech will be positioned on the subject parcel in the future, but it is not part of this application. If the rezoning is approved, this is an evaluation of the employment district. It is not a heavy industrial district. However, the following are pretty customary for the employment district. Schools, storage, retail trade, but mainly specialized manufacturing. And in the county, we have a number of mixed-use districts. Here's what's not allowed: heavy industry like chipmills, hazardous waste facilities, incinerators, shooting reins, and solid waste facilities. This is a look at the property right now that is under an active state permit for erosion control, and it is actively being graded. The Pratt and Whitney facility was approved by the Board of Adjustment, and construction is underway, at least horizontal construction at this point. Will be served by public water and sewer. Again, this is more of a housekeeping item, this is 11.57 acre strip of that remaining R3 that's on that piece of property. This is a better way to look at the parcel itself. The subject site is denoted with a, with a one of three, or two yellow stars there. To the north across the French Broad River, for context purposes, is the Buncombe County Ferry Road property. And the proposed bridge is noted there at the bottom, and it will align with the intersection at the Arboretum and eventually provide access to the site itself. Compliance with adopted plans. So, not only do we look at compliance with the comprehensive land use plan, we also look at the strategic plan alignment, and the AVL 5x5 strategy should be looked at in this instance, because you will notice alignment with strategic, or I'm sorry, specialized manufacturing, and it hits numerous sectors and is discussed often in the land use plan, strategic plan, and of course, the Chambers 5x5 strategy. Staff recommendation of this application is to approve. One thing we're doing now and in the future is we're including a slide specifically from the planning board that not only tells you how they voted, but why they voted that way. You will also have your planning board resolution in your packet. It was initially reviewed on February the 15th. Because we're still virtual from a planning board, we have to do two sort of reviews. The planning board made a vote on March the 1st. They made a finding that the request was consistent with the comprehensive land use plan, and they unanimously recommended that the Board of Commissioners approve the request. That concludes the presentation, and I'm available for any questions. And when you're ready, we can go over the good old combined plan consistency statement, and I'll walk you through it.
Nate?
Go ahead.
Quick question about, just so I understand, your maps and which sections of which parcels are rezoning here?
Let me pull that back up real quick. Okay, I'm on the proper slide.
Yeah, the sliver you have in blue, is that a part of the, is that a portion of the neighboring parcel? Or the larger parcel that sits?
It's part of that floating 100-acre parcel that will become the Pratt and Whitney property.
Okay.
Now, for context purposes, the actual plant itself that was approved by the Board of Adjustment sits entirely in that blue section.
Okay.
So, this portion will be instrumental, at least a piece of it, there will be a road connection, and there will also potentially, we're still working on alignment in the future, there will be that future AB Tech training facility on that property as well.
Okay, so we are not being asked to rezone a portion of another, of another parcel, but it is, it is a portion.
It is fully contained within the subject parcel, but it is a portion of the subject parcel itself.
Thank you.
Sure.
Nate, did you say MSD transmission lines?
What's that, say that again?
Did you say MSD transmission?
Duke transmission lines, if I said that, I'm so sorry. MSD boards always on my mind, so.
Thank you. Are there other questions for staff at this time? We will need to open the public hearing. Let's go and open the public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:47 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment?
Public registered for the public comment.
Okay.
I mean, public hearing, sorry.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing at 6:48 PM. Further discussion, questions, or someone would like to make a motion regarding a consistency statement?
Would it be helpful if I read the consistency?
You need, we need to point to a couple of, at least several of the consistency elements.
Yes, in the staff report, staff found that it is within reasonable proximity to major transportation corridors, A. B, within reasonable proximity to infrastructure combined water sewer service areas. Found that it's E, outside of moderate and high-slope stability hazard areas. F, outside of flood hazard areas, and G, separated from low-density residential uses. So, you may choose to say that you find it consistent with the comprehensive plan for the reasons stated in A through G.
That's my motion.
And Mr. Presley, you concur? Okay. Further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And now, is there a motion to support the rezoning itself?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Pennington.
Thank you.
Ms. Pender, do you have any items for the county managers?
No, ma'am.
I do, sir, I would ask Rachel Nygaard. As you know, the federal government has passed the American Rescue Plan. We have been tracking that bill, and I'll ask Rachel to just give you some high-level thoughts of where we are now. And this will be something that will continue to the future, but tonight, she'll share some high-level thoughts.
Hello again, Commissioners, Rachel Nygaard with Buncombe County Strategic Partnerships Office. The title of the fund that we're going to speak about tonight is the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. But before we get there, wanted to set some stage with a little bit of context. In particular, stopping to look at some information about funding coming from the state of North Carolina, because each time there is additional funding awarded to, to local communities, to Buncombe County as part of COVID relief, it's happening within this broader context, and we want to make sure that we're maximizing all available funds and using them for the most appropriate purposes. So, this funding that is on your screen now was also passed last week and signed by the North Carolina Governor. This is SL 2021-3. You heard Philip Hardin earlier today share an update about housing assistance, and one of the items mentioned here is emergency rental assistance. I did want to clarify that it shows 10 million here, and Philip Hardin clarified for me that that 10 million includes the 7.8 million of ERA, the Emergency Rental Assistance that we were awarded in December and started. So, this brings in some funding for a lot of COVID response and community recovery items. The main purpose of coming and sharing with you this evening is to talk about the American Rescue Plan. This is the $1.9 trillion bill that was signed by the United States President last week, and is broad-ranging and includes a lot of different types of assistance. I want to look at some notes about some of the types of assistance that are in there, because we as Buncombe County a community, and we as Buncombe County a local government organization, will see funds from many of the different sections of this bill. There is more emergency rental assistance in this bill, as well as other kinds of support to individuals and families. Low-income energy assistance, childcare support, mental health support, food assistance, and Medicaid. There's a number of different types of support for small businesses and the local business community, including more of PPP, the Paycheck Protection Program, the economic injury disaster loans, even in addition to that, some specialized assistance for restaurants and bars. In addition to that assistance for individuals and for businesses, there's some community-level assistance in the American Rescue Plan, such as support for schools, and such as transportation and broadband. However, there is one item in particular within this plan that we're putting some energy toward creating some process around, which is the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. These are dollars that are dedicated towards state and local governments. There's $362 billion in sum across the nation. $65.1 billion of that is direct aid to counties. The estimated amount for Buncombe is $51.1 million. This funding is. This funding is different than CRF, the Coronavirus Relief Funds that we've worked together on in the past. CRF was passed to Buncombe County by the state of North Carolina, and then we had obligation to then pass to sub-recipients and the municipalities, but that's not the case here. States and municipalities each have their own assistance within this local recovery fund. We will receive that 50, the estimated $51.1 million in two tranches. The first half within 60 days of when the bill was signed, which was March 11th. The second half within 12 months of the first payment. And we have until the end of the 2024 calendar year to use the funds. The legislation defines four categories that funds may be used for, and they're listed in your materials and on the screen. The first category is related to COVID-19 response and response to the negative economic impacts of COVID-19. The second category is related to relief and aid to workers who have performed essential work related to COVID-19. The third use of recovery funds specified here is related to provision of government services that would have been paid for with revenue that then was reduced as a part of the economic impact of COVID-19. And the final use of recovery funds that's listed here is in infrastructure investments, specifically water, sewer, or broadband. There are a few other requirements that are listed in the legislation. I won't go through every bit of this fine print, but do want you to know that we're looking closely at the, all of the available information about this fund, and working with partners like membership organizations that we participate in, such as NACO, the National Association of Counties, for interpretation on use of these funds. Where we're at now is to decide a process for how these funds could be utilized within our community and within our organization. What is different here from some of the previous COVID funds that we have received is the emphasis on recovery. So we have some more flexibility to use funds to address the economic impacts of COVID-19 rather than just direct COVID-19 response to the public health emergency. We want to make sure that investments are aligned to the Buncombe County Strategic Plan, which, as you'll recall, has two sides, the community-facing portions and the internal-facing, so community and foundational. There are likely items within both the community and the foundational priorities that are appropriate for use of these funds. We propose to compile project ideas from our own resources internally, as well as go to community. So we've got some project ideas that staff have been articulating as part of the annual budgeting process, as part of capital needs, or, or information technology processes. We will look at those and see if there's anything there that's appropriate, and we would also ask community partners and the public for submission of ideas. Like we do with other processes like capital improvement, we would prioritize those projects using a scored, a standardized scoring criteria, and in keeping with our commitment to equity, make sure that we've got an equity tool included in that scoring. Keeping in mind the one-time expenditures, and in particular, those items that can be ready to be fully complete within that timeframe of using the funds. And would anticipate, once we have the draft of what those spending priorities are, coming back to the Board of Commissioners for, for sign-off on those. We have an internal structure for coordinating around this, which includes representatives of many different departments, finance and budget, performance management, strategic partnerships, and intergovernmental relations, as well as the service departments where projects may reside. We are looking to hire additional staff to support this in, similar to how we did with the Coronavirus Relief Funds for administration, and would anticipate bringing that back for decision from the board at your next meeting. So next steps, waiting for guidance from the U.S. Treasury. When Philip Hardin from Health and Human Services presented earlier, he talked about FAQs, those frequently asked questions, documents that come out from Treasury, and we're waiting for some of that additional information to let us know, for example, how much can we, what flexibility do we have to spend funding on administration? We would like to make sure that we have a method for gathering input from this group, from this body. One idea that has been suggested is a potential working session, like maybe a special meeting with the Board of Commissioners to talk about priorities, areas of focus, and potential projects. So we would circle back with you on that once we get more clarity. We will certainly want to coordinate with others that are receiving these funds, other, the local municipalities and the council on governments, to explore potential collaboration across jurisdictions, and working to create and promote the community process, where our partners, whether they're nonprofit organizations in the community or members of the public that have ideas, can submit those. We would collect and prioritize those ideas, and then, within a 60-to-90-day planning period, hopefully be ready to begin some projects, since we will have funds in-house in about mid-May. I think that's the last slide. It is.
All right, thank you, Rachel. Are there any comments, commissioners?
I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah.
I'm looking at your use of recovery fund slide, the four points. I assume that's language that's taken directly from the bill, from the rescue plan itself?
Yep, that's accurate.
Okay. And then number two here, just, I'm asking you to clarify things that you may or may not be able to.
Sure.
Clarify, because it's in that 1,500-page document or whatever. But providing premium pay to eligible workers of the county that are performing essential duties, am I to understand that that's just public employees, or is, would the county, in theory, be able to pay emergency room personnel that work for a private entity?
Thank you for that question. So we are researching whether that premium pay could be applied for both Buncombe County employees and employees within other employers in the community. There's some language around transferring funds to other entities, and we want to make sure that we have that 100% confirmed before we commit, but that's, that's a question that we're researching.
Okay, thank you. And my second question is around the transfer of funds bullet in your next slide, that additional requirements, fine print, the third bullet, state and local governments are allowed to transfer to a private nonprofit organization, a public benefit corporation involved in the transportation of passenger or cargo or a special-purpose unit. I just don't, I just don't understand what that sentence is telling me at all.
That sentence is not written in a very plain language kind of way.
Okay.
So our, our best bet at this point was to copy and paste the information from the legislation, because that's what we know for certain, and use our access to these networks to try to gain clarification. So we know some categories of organizations that that does include, but we want to get clarity about all organizations that we could potentially transfer funds to, and what status would apply. Would it be under sub-recipient, sub-recipient criteria, et cetera? When managing federal funds, we need to have clarity about the exact conditions under which, would it be contracts, what kind of monitoring would be required, et cetera?
I assume the goal or intent would be to support a nonprofit for some sort of public purpose, but that passenger or cargo language is throwing me off, to say the least.
Agree.
Thank you.
All right, so I think this sounds great. This is all, obviously, been unfolding pretty quickly in terms of Congress actually approving this, after talking about it for a while, and then knowing the final form of it. And it's very significant, obviously, like this is, I mean, I've been in local government for a long time, and it's pretty unprecedented in terms of just the level of resources. So I think these are gonna present a lot of great opportunities to do things in this county that people have been talking about and planning around for a long time, but which, you know, there haven't always been the resources to think realistically might happen in the near future. So I'm glad we're starting this conversation tonight. I mean, the feedback I've heard from members of the board is that there, there's a lot of interest in having, you know, robust input on this on the front end. So I think the idea of a work session sounds great, and I think it'd be great to schedule that, you know, sooner rather than later. But obviously, there's more info, we need to, we need to understand exactly what the options are to make that planning process as, as productive as it can be. So I don't think we have to set a date tonight, but I would just encourage it to be held, you know, more on the front end. So commissioners, any other comments or questions tonight? Okay, all right, thank you, Rachel. Appreciate it. Ms. Pender, any other items on the manager's report? Terrific. All right, we go to new business. The first item is the Clifton-Larson Allen LLP FY21 Audit Contract and Engagement Letter, and Don Warren is gonna present this item.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. So now that we're done with the previous audit, it's time to think about the next one. I have the audit contract for Clifton-Larson Allen. This would be the fourth year, so we had done an RFP for three years, we're gonna extend it one more year. We finally have gotten it down, and so it should be even smoother this time around. Cost is going up about $2,800 from last year, so the total will be $130,860. And the contract is the LGC standard template form. So I just need to get your approval. The Audit Committee has approved this contract already, just so you're aware, and I need the Board's approval and Brownie's signature on the document, as well as the engagement letter.
Any questions? My only question is, maybe this decision has not been made. At this point, obviously, the recommendation is to do, to work with this firm another year. Do you have a sense for when you might, you know, how frequently you might want to change up and use different firms? What are your general thoughts on that, Don?
My preference is always to do an RFP every about five years or so. It takes a good two, three years just to get a good rhythm, and then you want to take advantage of that for at least a couple more years, and then start over.
Okay, so maybe one or, one or two more years here, and then start thinking about, do you want to go through another process to open it up again?
Yeah, I would plan to do an RFP after the fifth year, definitely. And that's not to say that Clifton-Larson Allen wouldn't win.
They could compete for it, right? Sure, yeah. Any comments on this?
I'll make a motion.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Next up is a budget amendment for non-congregate sheltering model. Jennifer Barnett, our budget director, is gonna present this item.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. The budget amendment before you this evening is for the Grants Project Fund. Previously, Buncombe County, in coordination with a third-party vendor, has provided the isolation and quarantine shelter. The North Carolina Emergency Management has worked with local governments to provide reimbursement funding for the congregate sheltering statewide, and the isolation and quarantine, as a reminder, was established for individuals who are at high risk and need of a safe place to social distance. The request this, this evening is to increase the expenditure in the revenue budget for continuation of the provision of the service, with an estimated cost for the remainder of this fiscal year of $378,035. This does not require general fund or county contribution funds. These are funds that are reimbursable from North Carolina Emergency Management.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is a consideration of an ordinance prohibiting discrimination in employment in public accommodations, and Commissioner Jasmine Beach-Ferrara is gonna present this item, which is, for discussion purposes, there's no vote expected on this item tonight.
Thank you, Chairman, and I'll be co-introducing it along with Commissioner Sloan. I was just hoping to make a few brief introductory remarks and turn things over to Commissioner Sloan, and then very much look forward to the dialogue and discussion that we'll have this evening. Excuse me. So this, this marks the first time we're actually formally discussing this at a public meeting, although we had a brief conversation at a briefing a couple weeks ago. So I thought I would just start with a few notes on sort of the context of what's included in this proposed nondiscrimination ordinance, and also why, why now, and what it would mean to people in our community, including members of the LGBT community, a community I'm proud to be part of. The proposed nondiscrimination ordinance would be a local ordinance that would provide protections from discrimination in two areas. One of those is employment, and the other of those is public accommodations, which really means any place that people access public services. This ordinance would obviously respect and reinforce the protections that already exist under federal law for certain protected groups, and as we have the ability to do, federal law is the floor, we have the ability to go to the ceiling, above and beyond that, and so it would actually create protections for groups and around characteristics that, excuse me, are not yet protected under federal law, though it's certainly my hope that in the near future we'll see those federal laws pass. So let me just briefly read the, the areas that this will provide protection around. It includes race, natural hair hairstyles, ethnicity, creed, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender, identity or expression, national origin or ancestry, marital or family status, pregnancy, veteran status, religious belief or non-belief, age or disability. What does all this mean translated into the real world? What it means is that it would create new protections from discrimination for people, including communities that are historically and currently vulnerable to discrimination. It would create, for the first time, a way for people to report and address instances of alleged discrimination. Right now, if you believe you've been discriminated against because of who you are, or what you believe, or who you love, there's actually no local recourse around how to address that, and this would create a channel for that. It would communicate very clearly that we are a community committed to treating everyone equally, regardless of who you are, who you love. And in both the letter and spirit of this ordinance, it would be committed to principles of how we can work together to educate, to support, to provide resources around compliance. This is not intended to be a punitive ordinance that dispenses punishment. It's intended to be an ordinance that communicates community values, establishes clear standards around those, creates channels and due-process pathways to address alleged incidents, and hopefully gives us a powerful tool to get closer to that goal of being a place where every single person has an equal opportunity to thrive. There's one particular group that this ordinance would send a very powerful message to, and that is LGBTQ youth in our community. It is not easy growing up as an LGBTQ youth. That was true when I was growing up, and it's still true now in 2021. If you're lucky, you have family and friends and a faith community and teachers at school who support you, but many in our community do not have that level of support as they grow up. And this is a concrete step we can take to let youth know that their community cares about them and loves them, and wants them to have every single shot at the world, every single shot at, at living into the best version of their life. One question we might, some folks might be asking is why now? And that's a great question. There has been, there have been efforts to pass nondiscrimination ordinances in local communities for many, many years, and in some communities across the country, they've been And in some communities across the country, they've been in effect for decades. There are about 300 communities across the country that have nondiscrimination ordinances in effect. Part of this is about creating local protections, and part of this is also about building ultimately towards a goal of protections existing under federal law for all the communities named here. In the last five to six years specifically, we've seen nondiscrimination ordinances pass all across the South, across South Carolina, from small towns to large cities, across Mississippi, across Kentucky, across West Virginia. But none passed in North Carolina during that time until just a few weeks ago, and there was a very specific reason for that. A law named HB 142, which was passed on the heels of HB 2, very specifically targeted the LGBTQ community for discriminatory treatment. And one section of it imposed a moratorium saying local communities could not pass nondiscrimination ordinances. On December 1st, 2020, that section of HB 142 expired. And in the time since then, we've seen six communities across the state, including one county, Orange County, pass nondiscrimination ordinances, providing protections around public accommodations and employment. Some communities that already had existing local fair housing mechanisms in place have also provided protections around housing. That's something that in the future I hope we can discuss as a community because there is need. Right now, we're in a critical moment in our state. We have the opportunity here in Buncombe County to step out of the long shadow of a law and a long history of discrimination targeting minority communities, but specifically targeting LGBT community. We have the opportunity to step out of that long shadow and to catch up with what people across Buncombe County and North Carolina believe. There's very consistent polling that 67% of people across our state support nondiscrimination ordinances. We know that protections like this are good for people. It allows us all to bring who we truly are into our shared public life and to know that we'll be treated fairly and equally. It's also good for business. Everyone is familiar with the fairly seismic effect that the passage of HB 2 had on chilling the economic development climate in North Carolina. And even here specifically, we know that at least one major project was disincentivized from coming here because of that law and very legitimate employee concerns that this was not going to be a safe, hospitable place to be. One way we can communicate who we are, not just to our residents, not just to tourists who visit, but also to people who are thinking about relocating businesses here, is to pass an ordinance like this that clearly creates those protections and helps, hopefully, not just our community, but our state ultimately move forward on this journey. So I wanted to just share all of that and end on a note of hopefulness. I have had the opportunity to talk with so many different community members, business leaders, faith leaders, youth and families, and there is very broad support for this measure. There are also people who have questions and who may not support it, and my commitment is to stay in dialogue as much as possible through this process. I'm excited about the community conversation ahead, to do a lot of listening, including tonight, to what other commissioners have to say. And just briefly, from a process perspective, as Chairman Newman said, tonight is about discussion. This ordinance will be on the agenda on April 6th and will come forward for a vote at that time. That's when the formal vote will take place. As you'll see in the content, in the text of the ordinance itself, there's a couple key things to lift up. One is that the ordinance will be enforced civilly, not criminally. And part of that is that the county needs to develop systems for enforcement and reporting. So the version of the ordinance that will be introduced for vote on April 6th will include language identical to or very similar to what's in the version tonight, basically providing guidance and instruction to staff to bring back concrete recommendations that can be implemented, and also has July 1st, 2021, as an implementation date. The reason for that was not just to create time to develop new enforcement systems. We've never had a nondiscrimination ordinance in the county, so there's not currently a way to enforce it. But it's also so that our community has time between, my hope is this will pass on April 6th, and when it goes into effect on July 1 for education, discussion, dialogue. Many, many public accommodations in our community are already complying with the spirit and letter of this ordinance. If there are ones that are not yet, that period before July 1st, I hope, creates a lot of opportunity for us to work together as a community to provide support, education, technical assistance, and create a climate whereby July 1st, everyone be ready for this ordinance to go into effect. So with that, I will gladly turn things over to Commissioner Sloan and thank him for his leadership in the development and introduction of this.
Thanks, Jasmine. There's just two things I wanted to bring up with the board. The first was just to reiterate what I said for the benefit of the community, to reiterate what I told you all last time at our commission briefing for why I think this is important and to help answer the question of why now, which, again, I agree is an important question. And the second thing I wanted to bring up was a specific, what I hope will be a friendly amendment to the ordinance itself around the issue of enforcement. And so, first of all, LGBTQ persons in North Carolina, they still lack explicit, consistent protections at the local, state, and federal level, and that continues to be a big problem. A recent study from the Center for American Progress and the University of Chicago found that 1 in 3 LGBTQ people have experienced discrimination in the past 12 months, and that for transgendered people, that number is higher at 3 in 5. Throughout this health crisis that we're still living with, 15% of LGBTQ Americans report postponing or avoiding medical treatment due to discrimination, including nearly 3 in 10 transgendered individuals. So that's why, you know, to me, that's why it's important that we take this on and why now is the appropriate time and why I think, you know, I've only been in local government a few months, but I've, myself, and I think all of us, have received just, you know, dozens of emails and phone calls and contacts from the community for people that are interested in this ordinance and want its protections and want to see our leadership on this issue. And so there's one, you know, one suggestion I have for the board's consideration or discussion if you want to. And that's around, let me find it in the ordinance here, to give you the page, the penalty section. On, does it have a page number? It does not have a page number. But the penalty section in the draft ordinance, I wanted to talk about briefly. Our attorney, Mr. Frue, provided, I think it was all of us, a list of the penalties associated with all of our county ordinances, whether it's the noise ordinance or erosion control, that type of thing. And my, you know, in looking at this, my hope was to perhaps suggest changing this language to strengthen it a little bit and to make it more in keeping with those existing codes and ordinances. You know, I think it's best that they are consistent and analogous and more alike across all ordinances. And also, you know, at the end of the day, this is people's lives and their livelihoods, so perhaps more important than a noise ordinance. And so right now, we have a civil penalty of $100 citation, which is just a one-time situation. And I guess what I'm suggesting, and pull up my language. What I'm suggesting that's borrowed from other ordinances that we have is $100 for the first offense, $250 for the second, and $500 for the third offense, if those are occurring all in the same calendar year. So just suggesting adding that language to strengthen this, to create a process for, you know, additional offenses. And so that's my suggestion for your thought and discussion, if you'd like. And I'll just end by saying to reiterate what Commissioner Beach-Ferrara said about, the intent of this isn't to be punitive. It's not, the intent of this is not to have these penalties. It's to communicate our priorities and our goals for the community and to create a safe place for everyone. So that's, you know, that's not my intent, is not to highlight this, but I do want it to be, I do want people to understand that it's important and that we're consistent with our ordinances, so.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Are there questions or comments from other Commissioners?
Well, I'll say thank you to both of you for working on this. This is definitely an important issue, and I believe that no one in our community should face discrimination, and we want everyone to feel safe and thrive. And I really appreciate the way you've been working on the language. I know you've been refining that and getting input throughout the process. And as Commissioner Sloan said, we've had a lot of feedback, definitely, which has been really great to hear from the community. And I know there have been some questions around shelter issues. And would you please share your thoughts on this aspect of the ordinance?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Wells. That's a great question. So homeless shelters would be covered under the public accommodation section of this ordinance. And basically, what it would say, again, in letter and spirit, is that a shelter, like a restaurant, a hotel, could not treat people differently or discriminate against people on the basis of any of the identities or characteristics that are listed here. And that is, I think, a baseline commitment that shelters on the whole try to live into is wanting to help, especially people in crisis. There are some specific issues that, as we certainly have seen, you know, we have the benefit of 300 communities having nondiscrimination ordinances in effect. And so all those communities where local agencies have figured out how to come into compliance if they weren't already. I think one of the issues where there might be some opportunities to be in dialogue and hopefully offer some constructive assistance to shelters is around some of the policies in place around the requirement of state-issued photo IDs and the ways that that intersects with, for instance, the experiences of an undocumented resident who might not have a state-issued photo ID, or a transgender person who might have a state-issued photo ID that does not align with their name and gender because they don't necessarily have the money to update those. So there are some specific instances where it oftentimes, what it is, is at the level of policy and practice that there can be some updates or sort of amendments made to policies that work for the vast majority of the population that essentially sort of creates some equity of access for people who may not be able to meet that criteria. So those are some of the, I hope there'll be some opportunities for some really constructive dialogue. It'll start with listening, of course. You know, we know that particularly this year, shelters in our community have been on the front lines of the COVID pandemic. It's been a hard winter. They've been doing extraordinary work. And we also know that, at the same time, we know that certainly within the LGBTQ community, there's higher rates of homelessness among youth, among transgender folks. So there's some very particular needs that come up around what it means to provide safe shelter to LGBTQ folks and making sure that that's something that we're doing as a community as well. Does that address your questions? Thank you.
All right, further questions or comments from Commissioners? All right, so this is scheduled to be on the commission agenda. We've talked about it at a briefing meeting. We're talking about it again tonight. And so it's scheduled to be on the commission agenda for further consideration and possible decision-making at our first meeting in April. So to be continued, we, as we've said, we've heard from a lot of folks in the community representing, you know, different perspectives on this. And so we encourage people to continue to let us know your thoughts on this between now and the time that we sort of formally take it up for deliberation at our first Tuesday meeting in April. So thank you very much. Unless there's any other comments for now, I think we're good and we are ready to move on to our next item, which is consideration of board appointments. So Commissioners, let's get out our list of folks we need to review this evening. And the first one is the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, and there's four reappointments. There's four members, each have served one term. I'll make a motion to reappoint Robert Tomasulo, Marcia Saethian, Peggy Frunk, and Ann Minks. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've got a couple of situations where we need to kind of talk about our policy on board appointments. So on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, there's five reappointments. Four out of the five folks who are, who could be considered have already served two terms. So we have a board policy that says you can only serve two terms before, you at least need to take some time off before you could be reconsidered for appointment again. You know, and the idea is like, let's bring in fresh perspectives. There's some people who get on boards and stay there forever, and they're great, but it's time to get some different thoughts. So one of the requests, though, specifically for this, is that there's a very high percentage of people who are relatively new to this board. And the idea that the funding recommendations made by this board are important and take a while to kind of learn, you know, kind of get up the learning curve on this. So the request from this board was to reappoint some of these members for, I guess, for an additional term or some additional period of time because they've got experience as the rest of the new members kind of get fully up to speed on the workings of the board. As I looked at this, and Mr. Joyner or anyone else who's got, you know, making sure I've got my facts straight on this, one aspect of this board that's a little bit different is that the terms on this board are actually just two years, where many of our boards are for longer periods of time. Is that, do I have that correct, Mr. Joyner?
Yes, you are correct.
Okay. So when I initially got the email requesting consideration of this, I was fairly cool to the idea because I think it's just important to consistently say, you know, when you've served your two terms, let's let someone else serve for a while. But the fact that these terms are actually just shorter than most terms, I think, is a pretty good argument for maybe considering this a little bit differently than the boards where, you know, because two terms here would be just four years. So I guess I'm saying I'm open to the request in this case for that specific reason. Mr. Joyner, do you have a comment?
I would also add that these positions are requirement positions. These are not just open to the public positions. These are required positions for these reappointments.
Yeah, this is a board where the positions are, many of them are very specifically prescribed, the background, the professional background and expertise. Not that there wouldn't be other great people from those professions, but it is, it's not just an open-ended thing, so.
If I could just briefly, we're talking JCPC. Yeah, I had the opportunity to serve on JCPC for several years, and this is a board where there's a fairly heavy lift on training and a fairly high level of technical consideration around the way the grant-making happens. So I think for that reason, I would certainly fully support this proposal. There's a great team of folks who've gone through that and are up and running now and are, it would be exciting to be able to support their continued leadership there.
I'm supportive too. Can we just amend the JCPC, like, bylaws to increase their terms?
Well, I think it's our, I think it's our policy. I don't think the JCPC has any rules that restrict someone from serving a third term. It's just the county's policy of generally limiting terms, reappointments to two terms. So we could just say, you know, for this commission, in light of the short length of the terms, that members may serve up to three terms rather than two. Or we can just make this decision. It's kind of the facts on the ground. But I do, I would want to, if we make an exception here, I would want us to document why we're doing it because I know it can be tempting when other folks come in, they've always got a good reason. But I really feel like the two-term limit is generally a good policy, and we ought to try to kind of hold to it. But this is, it is, this is different.
There is. I'm sorry, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Within the policy, there is language that states that the board, the commissioners may waive and determine if the removal of an individual made ineligible by this policy would be detrimental to the function of that board, committee, or authority. It is language within the policy that speaks to the ability to waive this term limit. Or, excuse me, the consecutive terms.
Well, what I was going to say, and what Parker said, you know, could we change it to four years rather than two? Wouldn't that solve a problem?
I think the bylaws actually do state that the terms are two years, but the bylaws of the JCPC don't limit it to two terms. But I think they do. of the JCPC don't limit it to two terms, but I think they do, the bylaws do state the terms are two years. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct, but I don't have that in fund.
I'm, I'm pretty sure, because I, I just looked at it, yeah.
The terms, not the bylaws, so that's.
Yeah.
Is now?
I'm pretty sure that is in their bylaws around the, however that got created. How about this? I'll make a motion to, to reappoint, well, first of all, I'm going to make a motion to reappoint Tony Blevins, he's only served one term.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me just go ahead and do that one.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Brown, can, go ahead. These next four have already served two terms.
They have.
And as in what Jasmine was saying, it is very important and, you know, what you've got to do and schooling you need for this. Is there any way we could stagger this here or these four going to come off at the same time and have a whole new group coming in?
I think it's a good point. But, but again, because the bylaws say they're up every two years, I don't think we can change that. I think we should probably just say that we're open to the, the terms of this board being up to, up to three terms or up to six years total, because otherwise, you're going to constantly be having a lot of people coming off and coming on and not gaining that level of, it's going to be kind of continuously sort of inexperienced board if you're, if you're, if the turnover is that fast. So I think, I think the best solution is just to be open to six years total on here and then, and people serving three terms instead of two.
But that would still leave us in the same place of four of them going off at one time.
But the other thing is, it's a huge board. There's like 20.
Oh, okay. Okay, then.
So it's, it's, again, that's all prescribed by the bylaws. It's not our choice. So, yeah, it is, there's a lot of folks coming off, but there's, there's a lot of people on this board. Yeah. So I'll make a motion that we reappoint Clement Ordaway, Abbott, and Dotson Smith to an additional term, recognizing that these terms, the terms on JCPC are just two years and that were, the board's open to serving up to six years on this particular board.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next is Mount Area Workforce Development Board, and Mr. Joyner, do you have any comments on this?
I don't have any comments directly, but I will say that this is the board that Nathan Ramsey sent you, the document, and that was, it was passed out to all of the board members as well, so everybody should have, had an opportunity to read the letter.
So I'll comment on that, but before I get to that issue of county residency, the other question I had is just, the document says there's four reappointments, but there's six candidates listed. Is it four or six?
Yeah.
Seven. April Brown.
I don't see her on here, April Brown.
She's not on the list. Is she up for reappointment now?
She's on, this is on the agenda.
Oh. I'm looking at this list. There's actually eight people on that list. Are we clear on how many reappointments are open right now? And if you need a little moment, we can come back to this one.
Verify this.
Okay. Let's, let's move on to the next ones and then we'll come back to this. Okay. The Mountain Community Capital Fund Operating Committee has three reappointments, and they've all served one term. I'll make a motion to reappoint Love, Nygaard, and Kaplan.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And we also have the planning board. There's two reappointments. They both served one term. I'll move to appoint, reappoint Taylor and Waldrop.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We appreciate all those folks serving. Mr. Joyner?
And Mr. Chairman, if, if, if the clerk is still looking, you've skipped early childhood education at the top of the list.
Sorry, I was just going off the hard copy here. All right. The early childhood education, which is on the, linked on the site. So the recommended motion is to ratify and affirm the appointment dates and initial terms of each of the early childhood education committees that are indicated in the memo. So these are all folks that were appointed in 2019, except for Wendy Wyber, who was appointed in 2020. And these are recommendations that were developed by the committee. So these are all members that are currently serving, and because it's a new committee, it's sort of setting the dates for when their terms, I guess their initial terms would expire to create staggered terms. So I'll make a motion to approve the recommended dates.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Now, if we, if we can go back to the Mountain Area Workforce Development Board, there are six reappointments, and if the other two, which are listed on the actual agenda, if we need to do this at the next meeting, we can. I'll get clarification on that, but can we at least address the sixth that are actually on the sheet that I've passed out? Sorry about that.
That's okay. That's okay. But if we reappoint these six, what happens to the other two? Are there two more appointments that are going to be available to appoint them to?
I think.
Do you see more time to look into that?
I, I really think those other two may not have submitted their application.
Okay.
And I think that's what the, the deal is for that. And so, I just want to clarify that, and if we do, we can do this at the next meeting. And I do apologize once again.
We do have six members who have only served one term. It was, whose terms are up, so we can act on that, and I don't think that, I don't think that closes any doors on anybody, on anybody else. Let me, let me raise the other question that came up, which is about who the, and again, please correct me, Mr. Joyner, if I get any of this inaccurately, if I stated inaccurately. Tony Reed is the chair of the board. He works in Buncombe County, but he lives in Kansas. We also have a policy that generally requires people to be residents of Buncombe County. So Mr. Reed is not a resident of the county, but he does work in the county. Kind of as with the previous discussion, you know, I, my personal view has been to try to be real consistent on this, just partly out of a fairness to all the different kinds of folks who would serve on our boards, even though we've had some really good people from outside the county come forward. You know, I think we've tried to be pretty consistent on this. I guess you can always try to find a little bit of an exception in anything. This is a regional board, which, this is not just a board whose jurisdiction is limited to Buncombe County. So I guess I'm also pretty open-minded to the request here in light of the fact that we're making appointments to something that's more than just Buncombe County. So, but I wanted to bring it to the board and have the board make a decision on that.
There are other members on the board from outside of Buncombe County, is, is what you're saying?
All of these applicants all live in, all the other applicants live in Buncombe County. I can't speak to, I can't speak to the entire membership.
Okay.
Well, since he's from Haywood, are they, they are in the?
They're not.
They're not in the region?
That's what I was just looking up. They're not.
Okay. Is what I said not correct? Is this?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So it is multiple counties. I was right about that.
You were right about that.
But Haywood's not, okay. Okay. Now, makes sense.
Thank you for that clarification.
If he were in one of those, I think that would be an easier decision.
Well, Commissioners, what are your, what are your thoughts? It is a regional board. This is our, these are our appointments, though, so, anybody want to make an argument one way or the other?
I, I will state, as well as the previous board, that we considered the JCPC, this is also requirement-based board. So this is, generally speaking, this is specified individuals that work in certain capacities.
Yep.
So there's a requirement for someone with vocational rehab program experience or, or even to be in that profession?
Correct.
Yeah.
Which he, which this, this person does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Work in that space.
Seems to make sense to me.
I'll, I'll make a motion that, I'll make a motion to reappoint these members.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Mr. Joyner, do we have any other board items?
No. That should be it.
Okay. Got a couple of announcements. March 16th at 3:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, room 326 in downtown Asheville. This is not, or, this is not correct. This is that date.
This is, right.
So let me, let me look at my calendar here. All right. The county commissioners will hold their next briefing meeting on Tuesday, nope, that's not right.
April 6th.
On Tuesday, April 6th at 3:00 PM, at 200 College Street, room 326 in downtown Asheville. And then, on that same date, April 6th at 5:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold a regular meeting at 200 College Street, room 326 in downtown Asheville. Is there a need for a closed session? Great. Is there a motion to adjourn? Ms. Pender?
Sir, did you want to announce the budget work session on March 30th?
Oh, yeah. Thank you so much. The county commissioners will hold a budget work session, the first of three, on Tuesday, March 30th, at 10:00 AM until noon, on the first floor of 200 College Street.
I believe it's actually here.
Okay. It might be on the third floor of 200 College Street rather than the first.
Yes, I think it'll be here.
It'll be somewhere in 200 College Street. It's not a large building. All right. And that, that meeting will be broadcast through the same means that we do our other meetings. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So who?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.